For the Foxfire Council, let the record show that all four members are present. And we have one member, Sandy Cameron, in the audience. Okay, can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda or the approval of minutes?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Okay. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Could I just get on the agenda for, I just want an investment update?
Investment update? And then I have a few things to put on here that we've gotten some updates on. And that will be the pool quote, performance bond discussion, the re-avertment policy discussion, and a program that we should see if we're interested in, the opioid abatement program.
The what?
Opioid abatement program with the state put together. Okay. And I'll sit there and approve the minutes for the agenda?
You get the motion.
Okay, first thing, I saw there, first thing discussion going down the list is village ordinance compliance and enforcement. Councilman Sammons?
So, I'm gonna kinda combine them into this whole briefing. And I asked for your patience as I go through. I put a little bit of work into it, so I wanted to spend some time talking with the council about an area that I feel is in need of addressing for the village. And my goal here is literally to just approve or just to improve the visual quality and the aesthetic characteristics of our village, which in my tenure has been an area that needs to be addressed. And I've got a couple items to highlight that are specific to that. And I'm gonna start with the village ordinance, compliance, and enforcement. And my observations are, I have not gone out of my way to find these violations. They're well and open to anybody that could look into a person's yard. And I'll just tick off a couple of them. And I'll start with, again, the ordinance violations. Storage sheds, mainly skirting. We've had a lot of them that have been brought up. And clearly, the ordinance, section 21-81, talks about accessory buildings. And it talks about the fact that all accessory building foundations must be screened with lattice or planting sections or plantings. And none of that, and I shouldn't say none, but there's been quite a few that I can see that have not been done. Fence, fencing, non-compliance. A couple different things have shown up as relates to that. Number one, and of course Donna is very well aware of the one example, the wire fencing is on the wrong side of the fence. And also, we have several, quite a few that are dilapidated or in disrepair. And again, section 21-8-31A talks specifically about how that the wire mesh should be attached. And clearly, it says inside of the fence. Also, as it relates to the fencing, that fencing shall be finished on the side facing the public right of way. Fences will be maintained and good and repaired or replaced when broken, leaning, or otherwise dilapidated. And again, these are my observations that we have several areas that need to be addressed. Foundation plantings, I think we all agree that we have a clear ordinance that talks about that, landscaping, 21-8-4. And it clearly lists out what the requirements are in terms of the number of plantings based on the linear footage. And again, several of our areas and houses do not have that. Heating and cooking fuel tanks, these are talking, I'm talking about LP tanks. Capacity over 200 gallons must be buried. Specifically, the ones that I'm noticing though is of 21-8-71, paragraph B, all tanks of less than 200 gallons must be either buried or shall be completely screened with ever being landscaping and or lattice fencing. And there we have a lot of open LP tanks. Those are just some of the ones that I noticed that is in regards to our ordinance. And I'm gonna come back, wrap back around to that in my conclusion. The second area is the village district, village business district, appearance and compliance. I'll start with the Foxfire Resort and Golf Club appearance. This is as observed from the roadway, overgrown weeds, piles of sand, general rundown appearance at parking lot buffers. We have a current maintenance area that is exposed and open to all of the stuff that's inside of that. I don't know, nor could I find, I'm sure there's something in there that talks about general appearance for those kind of places. I couldn't find anything specific to the village business district. But again, I'll come around to that one. The other area that I want to bring up to the council is this new maintenance area. I don't know what plans are out there, whether they've been viewed, approved. Again, the area that that maintenance facility is, which is right at our main entrance, right by the roadway, again, I don't know how that all happens, but that's where it's going in. But I have not seen any plans or...
Plans have been submitted.
To zoning? So we haven't seen any as a council?
No.
You can go to Brad, he's got the copy. Go to Brad, if you wanna look at it, he's got it.
He approved it.
As I discussed, as I thought when we discussed this with them, that building was gonna be down that drive further. It wasn't gonna be right on the corner. It was gonna be down further.
That's where I always, where it is is where I always...
Right on the corner?
Yeah, me too.
Okay. But, and I also thought that what they did there, that was for septic. That's what Lisa said, that that part that's cleared right now is for the septic. And the building is gonna be...
Further down.
Further down, but still, it was still supposed to be totally screened.
It will be. There's a plan that they have submitted, called for screening.
And if that's, if that's the case, then I think it'll be fine. But again, I always struggle with the fact that the council, especially for commercial projects, we never get to see what's going on. And I don't agree with that. I really do think that even before Lisa approves, and I know she's got the ultimate, you know, zoning, you know, approval, but I still think that we should be involved in that. I think we should look at it, and then she can either approve or disapprove.
Well, I think we did look at it briefly.
I never, I never saw it. I don't remember seeing it.
I never saw it.
I think anything going into the village business district, the council should have an idea of what's going on.
I agree.
And have input.
Because we can control the aesthetics of the, that's the only thing we can control at this point, is the commercial building and, you know, recreation.
Type of business we can control, so.
Well, we can, we can control the aesthetics of it as well, which we can't, but we can't control where it goes, right?
No, as long as it meets the setbacks.
Right. We can make recommendations, but, or maybe traffic control and things like that.
At one point, they were gonna build it right across from Donna's house.
Correct.
I thought that was gonna work out.
I thought if they were talking, the input I'm getting is that they should've put it between...
We'll talk about that, but I don't know what happened to that.
You mean down below?
Yeah.
Well, Brad said it was gonna cost him like $60,000 to put a road down there for all these trucks, brigands, heavy stuff in there.
But regardless, can we change that process? I mean, can't we put a process in place where...
We can review the process.
I really believe that if it's the business district or the commercial district that we're recreational, that we should see the plans before it's approved.
So, okay, I don't know how those are outlined. Is there something that outlines those procedures, Donna? I'm sure there is, it's somewhere, I've gotta believe.
For what?
Just in regards to items, we're specifically talking about the maintenance shed for the golf course.
Uh huh.
Because it's in the village business district area.
Well, it's actually not in the business.
It's in the recreational.
It's in the recreational area.
But we thought that because of its location, that we would have an idea, or at least we have some say in terms of aesthetics or appearance, because it is in our main drive.
It's in the village.
Can I stand up and say something?
Not now, well...
Oh, that doesn't matter. It doesn't matter to me. But there are definitely some things that were laid out in the beginning that Lisa knows about. And according to the requirements for that district, that will govern the fencing and the screening. That's all been talked about.
Yeah.
No, I think the process is that we haven't been in, we never saw it, see it. And that's not your fault. That's, I think it's a paperwork issue, a flow.
You guys don't approve accessory buildings. I can tell you exactly what happened. Mick McHugh came to me, and Lisa came to me, and they asked us to look at it because it was out of the ordinary. And so we sat down with the golf course, we sat down with John Brown. I mean, Lisa has all the plans.
Yeah, I don't doubt that, Mayor. All I'm saying is that we as a council, I guess what really, I guess what spurred this was with its location being at the main entrance area, it was something that I thought might be worthy of our time.
We'll circle back.
All right.
We'll circle back. Okay.
Okay. And then again, talking about this same thing, in terms of general appearance of the general store, the parking lot, the piles of stone, there's temporary signs, the fences in disrepair, the dumpster is out in the open. I'm, again, I'm merely bringing this forward to our council because it speaks to our business district. And it does not present a very pleasant aesthetic appearance. We, you know, our residents support that, that store. And I think that we should maybe reach out to the owners and see if there's anything that can be done to improve the way it looks. It looks rundown and in disrepair.
One of the things that I've been discussing with Lisa is we've not had a good appearance committee function.
I'm coming to that.
And if we, we should probably advertise for that on the website.
Yep.
And let's get that going, because that falls clearly within purview of the appearance committee to do recommendations to the council and things like that.
Well, I agree. And I also think that when things are not, when ordinances are not being followed, we have an ordinance officer that should be charged.
Yes, we do.
That's his job. And if he, he should be maybe, I don't know if he's read the ordinances and if he's familiar with them, and how, and again, I know it's a, but it's pretty black and white if you, if you're within them, or, you know, or at least start with the black and white violations of you don't have screening on your shed, or you don't have enough plants, or you've got temporary signs on your store, and that's, you know, these final signs aren't allowed, and your fence is broken. You know, you get a warning letter, you need to fix this. Okay?
Wasn't that the appearance committee that used to send out that letter?
The appearance committee used to do all of that stuff.
Well, I was...
They would generate all kinds of letters.
Okay.
Lisa had several in file.
I talked to one of the guys that was on the appearance committee a year or two ago. I told him, I was, what about this situation here? He says, well, if you, if you don't like it, tell Lisa. Well, he's on the committee, he should be the one to take it.
I think people need to be made...
But that appearance committee hasn't really done much.
We can, we can put the advertisement on and ask for people to help.
But if we see a violation, we should go ahead and start to...
Well, the ordinance officer should be doing all of this stuff anyway.
Right. And they, and they, they said that they would send out letters, no problem, especially like the fence. Your fence is in disrepair. It even needs to be removed or repaired.
Or taken down.
Right.
Can I ask, what are the repercussions if they don't do it though?
If they don't what?
If they don't comply.
They get fined.
They get fined.
We can find them?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
And they could go to the appeals committee, the board of adjustment, if they feel that they're being, you know...
That they're wrong.
Okay, so in those situations, and we know who Spence we're talking about, which he clearly violated.
Yeah. And he violated your agreement with him.
Oh, no, yeah, well, that one too, but the other one.
I know.
With the mesh. Oh, that's, that should be a letter, absolutely. And I think we have every right to do that.
There should be no question.
Right. And why are we waiting?
We just have to get it enforced. We've got a compliance officer, he's gotta start enforcing it.
Okay.
Oh, you want, are you gonna get to that? Okay, Carrie's gonna get to that.
Well, okay.
Yeah, so that, yeah, no, those are all great, absolutely. Because we're getting there. So also, we have some areas that I think we are following down. The main entrance area that goes into where the golf course is, that with the sign and the plantings and all that.
The middle?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we own that?
No.
Who does?
They do.
They do.
The golf course was...
Golf course?
Yes.
Okay, because that is overgrown with weeds.
Yeah.
And in disrepair. I thought, I thought that was us.
No.
You're supposed to do it.
Okay. So, all right, then that, that's it.
Okay, put that one on me.
I wasn't going to. And then, and then, this is, this is one last thing I'm gonna bring up that's a little bit separate from the items that we just talked about, but still falls within the purview of forcing ordinances, and that is abandoned property.
Yeah.
We've got property, one specific house that's been abandoned, is overgrown with weeds, and I believe is becoming, can become a hazard.
Yeah.
Clearly, again, it does, it spells it out exactly in the abandoned property, what needs to happen. And I don't believe anything's being done about that.
Which property is that?
It's one right next to...
One on the corner.
Right next to where else?
Well, and you know, that was a reverse mortgage situation.
But why does that matter? Why does that matter?
No, no, I'm just saying the bank is still, the bank owns it.
The bank owns it. But the bank should be maintaining it. They can't just let it go into disrepair without repercussion. There's gotta be...
And there's a clear statute in ordinance that talks about what has...
Now, when you say ordinance, that's our ordinance?
Correct.
Now, what's, when you say statute, is that a...
There's actually a North Carolina...
Oh, okay.
General statute?
Yeah, general statute.
Well...
Which I've got, I've got the numbers for that.
Do you have the number on that 160?
160D.
So if we can find out who the bank is that now owns it, or the company, whatever, we can, we should be contacting them and saying...
Lisa might have that, because John Schulte had a house on six, number 12 RIT that he sold, and the yard, front yard and backyard had weeds this high. I went down and told, asked, but to Lisa, and I said, Lisa, somebody's gotta take care of that property. She went on site, found the phone number, it's some LLC company down in, just down here towards Rocky, Ellerby. She called him up, and the guy answered and said, you know, you gotta get this taken care of. She says, this was on a Thursday. She says, well, we can't do it tomorrow, but do it the first next week. They were out there Monday, and they mowed that yard.
Oh.
And that's all you gotta do on this shit, to get things started.
Well, somebody has to get, somebody has to let Lisa know.
That's right.
To do it.
And there was...
To talk amongst ourselves without telling her.
Well, there's been, well, I, you know, she's not here.
You gotta comply, like these, all these storage sheds. Talk to the police chief, make a note which ones they are, you'll send out a letter to them. He's gonna do that with other things, like the garbage cans. He's agreed to do that. The way he's gonna handle it, he's gonna send out a letter to these people, give them seven days to comply, then they're gonna go out and check it.
Well, unfortunately, Donna's not being done.
Yeah, and he will get done, because right now, the ordinance for the garbage can just got finalized. I gotta talk to the chief about it, he'll get started on it.
So, so...
And we've been an officer short for a while too, so that's sort of a, I gotta be doing more police work than enforcement.
I think that we, in my opinion, the council, not necessarily just us, but the council in general, has allowed these things to continue. And it, in my opinion, it is beginning, it is becoming more of a problem if we don't make people accountable for what we're supposed to be enforcing. So there are two, two items here that relate to that. Number one, is we have a, we have an enforcement officer that is supposed to be proactively doing these things, and based on my cursory, cursory look, that's not being done.
You're right, he's not doing it.
So, so that's number one. We, I don't, again, I'm not, I'm not gonna cast aspersions on anybody, I'm just saying that that task is not being done, and clearly shows in our village. Second, so that's one. Second is the appearance commission. The appearance commission, which clearly is outlined in our ordinance, section 2165, talks about this commission. It is their job to do a study of the visual problems and needs of Foxfire Village, shall make any plans and carry out any programs that will, in accordance with the powers granted, enhance and improve the visual quality and aesthetic characteristics of the village. I don't know how long it's been since we've had one. We don't have one. And it is not just one per, this is a seven-member...
It can be as little as three.
Sorry, three to seven-member panel that we, as in, I guess the council, has to institute and get up and running.
That's what I said earlier. So we made a decision, we're gonna do that.
So two things, right? We need an enforcement, we need our ordinance officer either to step aside and let's get somebody else, or that person needs to get out there and do what they're supposed to do. And then number two, we need to get a commission.
We can ask the chief, you know, what's...
Well, first of all, first of all, we don't have a commission right now, which is a dead issue. So until we get it done, we can be the people that spot, spot this stuff and turn it over to either Lisa, I would go right to the chief, and then he'd get out of it right now. I'll talk to him, get him going on it.
But, I have a question. We have a person that's supposed to be doing these things.
It's those...
It's their job.
The chief is in charge of that guy.
Okay.
See, he deals with the chief.
He'll take care of it.
No.
He deals with the chief.
Okay. So you're gonna take care of that?
I'll take care of it.
Good. So I have a quick question though. Feedback that I received was regarding this person. They don't know the ordinances, blah, blah, blah. And I'm thinking, okay, what is his title?
He's a compliance officer.
Okay.
But the thing is, he's gotta take a copy of the ordinance with him. But the thing is, when the chief sends a letter out, the ordinance is gonna go with that letter.
Correct.
So that's stated.
So my dilemma was, okay, we have a fence, which is in someone's backyard, facing the golf course, let's say. But there is nothing wrong, at least from what I can see, you know, I was told, well, they can't walk on the property. I understand that, but there's nothing wrong with knocking on the door and saying, we see your fence is up. I'm the compliance officer, I need to look at it. Do I have your permission to go look at it? Is there anything that prevents them from doing that?
I don't think so. He's a compliance officer. But the thing is, the reason we sent a letter out in advance is because people got intimidated with a guy coming with a weapon, boom, up the front door. But all they wanna do is go to the garbage can, it's the wrong place.
Right.
People got intimidated. That's why the chief wants to go with a letter with the copy of the ordinance, because it's a soft approach.
But, and I understand that, and I think that's a great idea, but on the other hand, that compliance officer should also have the opportunity to check these things.
Well, he will. He will, he'll go, you know...
Knock on the door.
Seven days after the letter goes out, he's gonna go out and check and make sure it's got started.
Okay. But I don't want the excuse to be, they can't go on people's property. And I understand they cannot just be walking on people's property, but I don't understand why they can't knock on the door and say, I need to verify, blah, blah, blah.
First of all, the first thing we gotta do, before we do anything else, is make sure the ordinance compliance officer knows what the ordinances are.
Correct.
So he knows what he's looking for. And if he knows that, then I think...
Well, that's...
He needs to know that before we do anything.
He will, the police chief is gonna give the ordinance officer the copy of the ordinance and explain to what he's gotta look for.
Yep. And he knows that, and I have no problem with sending a letter out.
That's a soft approach, it's the best...
An officer will be out within seven days to...
Yeah.
To look.
Okay.
Boom. And so that takes care of that.
So all I'm trying to say is that we need to pay some attention to...
Yes.
The logistics of our business.
You have to look at it.
Again, the businesses that are here need to be accountable. But it's the golf course or the general store, they owe it to our village to maintain their property.
Yeah. Yep.
I agree.
Nope, there's no, no argument on that.
Okay. So where do we go then, Mayor? Where do we go next?
He's gotta deal with his officers.
Okay.
And that's the first thing. Next thing is, if we have a complaint, we need to submit a complaint to Lisa.
Yeah.
To say, the fence, your fence is out of compliance. Fix it, or tear it down. And you have 30 days to do it.
So if I'm, so if I'm, if I'm gonna put in a fence, do I need to get a permit?
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
So if you have a permit, isn't there somebody supposed to follow up to make sure that the permit is...
Yeah, we don't have anybody to do that, but you're right.
Well, the thing is, is we never know when the permit is closed.
They don't come back to the office and say, my fence is built.
Correct.
They don't do that.
It could be months.
It could be a year.
So we don't have a process in place?
No.
No inspection process.
Because we have, we have an ordinance enforcement officer, not a zoning...
Correct.
There are two...
Right.
Two elements.
Okay. So is, so that probably needs a little attention maybe too, right?
Well, that's what we've been talking about for some time, how do we do this?
It's not hard.
Someone will be taking care of it, we get a good active commission.
So it would be the ordinance person that Donna's talking about?
Same guy to check, he's got the copy.
So would he be the one that says, okay, the fence is complete? He goes out to check it?
No, that's the zoning thing, that's not an ordinance. That's not an ordinance.
What do you mean it's a zoning thing?
It's a zoning ordinance as opposed to...
A general.
A general ordinance.
Yep.
We have two distinct properties. If you look at your, if you look at your book of ordinances, you'll see that you have the zoning as one section, and then you have all of these other ordinances.
Well, I guess the fence, we can use the fence as a good example, right? So, I mean, if...
As a zoning issue.
Well, no, there's an ordinance that states where...
If it's a zoning, if it's a zoning issue, the fences are controlled through zoning.
Yes.
And that means, that comes from a zoning officer. Because violations, it comes from the zoning officer. Ordinances are more like the plantings and the garbage cans and...
So this is the section in our ordinance that talks about permitted materials and how they are attached?
Correct, zoning ordinances.
No, we said zoning districts.
This is part of zoning.
No, sir. No, sir.
21... It's part of the UDO, it's part of the zoning.
So all of these are zoning issues? Landscaping?
Yeah.
Landscaping.
Most of them are all zoning stuff.
Fencing?
Yeah.
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
Okay.
You have to look, look at the whole book and you'll see how it's divided up.
All right. Well, I feel like I've done my part, but I don't really feel like nothing's happened here. I'm not very comfortable, as a council member, having to deal with my constituents, and not constituents, my neighbors who are frustrated with the way our vill- our, our village looks.
That's easier than you think.
We'll get to you, Mayor.
It is a slow process. We've gotta get-
We have zero process.
No, there is a process.
We have to follow the process. There is a process.
If people have, if people have a concern, the first question I would say was, "Did you go on the website and report a concern? Cite the address, cite what's wrong, or what your question is, and submit it."
And the process.
That's the process, and that's what people need to do. I mean, that's, that's the process. My God, we're a village of less than two thousand people. Um, I think it can be managed. If someone has a complaint, they need to go on the website, or I don't know if there's written forms that are here if you don't go on the website, if you can come to town hall-
We can try to get one, we can get something.
And say, you know, "Let me fill out a form. This is the address, this is my concern." And that's the process. That starts the process.
In process. Been working.
Yeah, 'cause Lisa said, as long as she knows about them.
So, if there's, if there's no compliance, and we're assuming everything's, everybody's happy with the, with the way things look? And we're-
Well, if no-
Well, if they're not, if you can see it-
That's a very valid argument, okay.
Yeah, it does.
That's how most zoning is enforced, though.
If you can see it, if someone can see it, you don't have to live next door. You drive down the street and you say, "What the heck is that?"
Yeah.
You, you get the address, you report a concern.
Okay.
And we have done that on a few occasions.
We have done it.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to call Gary with?
No, I think they're good points.
No, I think that's all very-
I, I am really frustrated with the book, Appearance of Our Village. And I'm, and I'm, I guess I'm gonna be the one that's gonna go out and start doing it. So, maybe I can put the lead in.
No, you're not. I'm gonna do it.
Okay, thanks, Don. Okay, I'll send them to you.
There we go. All right.
But no, they're good points.
After the next thing. F P O A.
Is that me? Is that me?
Yeah, F F U.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to say, I went to, and Don Boito was there also, the F P O A event at the, at the park this weekend there, carnival, was very well attended, very well received. I think everybody had a really good time. There was a little glitch with the food, um, truck vendors. They were overwhelmed. I know, what?
He felt bad, he ran out.
Yeah, the hot dog vendor ran out of hot, but it was most-
Well, that's a good thing.
Yes. Yes. We, he's a Chicago hot dog, and I told him, "Next time he comes, he's gotta bring his Italian beef." Um, but yeah, he, he said if he'd known there were gonna be that many people, his wife would've been there, uh, to help. But yeah, it went over really, really well. I was very happy for them.
About how many people you think went?
I, I, you know, the kids, wives, but, you know-
Couple hundred probably off and on.
Yeah, you know, counting parents and things. But yeah, they did a great job. I was very pleased with it.
Kind of kids.
I do have to ask one question, though, guys, and I know it's not on there. It's regarding the park and our sprinklers. Um, they were very nice. They put, um, cones. I have flags, but they put cones where all my sprinkler heads are. But, um, what's his, Dustin Hale, uh, sent me, I was talking to him. There are these donuts.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Um, there, there's concrete.
Yes.
And the ones that were on Amazon were thirty-eight dollars. I did go to one of the hardware stores, and he said he can get them for twenty-nine. And I said, "No, we really need like twenty-one." I was hope, hoping they'd be less expensive. So, he was gonna check with his manager to see if I can get them cheaper than that, 'cause I actually need twenty-one for that lawn.
For that.
Um, would anybody be adverse if we, if I can get them down in price?
What's that do to Ricky? Cut, cut the grass?
Um, they can be moved.
Oh, Debbie.
How, how high are they?
Um, you know, I haven't seen them in person.
Yeah, yeah.
Are they high?
You see them around.
Well, they'd have to get up and use their hand. You know, I, I just cannot have those things damaged every year. And we've got the trunk or tree coming up.
Do we need, do we need to have sprinklers there in an established lawn?
Yeah. Yeah, it gets dry out there. So, uh, so that's, you know, you, use their weed whacker around those.
Well, that will increase the landscaping costs, I'm sure.
No, it's part of his deal.
Well, not-
That'll do.
Not if we add those.
So, are these, is this sprinklers just a mule?
No.
So, so-
It's been there since the parks have been there.
Is it that much of a problem? I mean-
Well, they've replaced probably, on the average, two to three sprinkler heads a year.
And this year we-
That's not too bad.
No, no, no. This year we needed to replace most of them out there.
But without just wear and tear, no wear and tear?
No, they were all, what, and I think what a lot-
Most of them, actually.
I think a lot of it last year, and seeing where they are now, they were parking the cars out there last year for the trunk or tree. And I don't wanna pull those flags out and then have to have Ricky redo them. That's what I'm saying. Use his weed whacker. It, that's part of taking care of the park.
Yeah, but we're changing, we're changing his, um-
No, no.
Yeah, I think we are.
He, he did just mow it, and now when you're saying, "Well, now I need you to weed whack around all these things." It is gonna take him more time. I, I would assume it would cost him more money.
Yes.
Cost us more money. I, I would just assume that because we're, we're changing.
I, I don't know what else we can do to mark those, because again, every year I'd have to say, "Ricky, mark them for me."
But they've been parking there forever.
That's why they get damaged.
Correct. But I mean, is it, are, is it that much of an expense that we need to even do that?
Well, you say, it was like five hundred dollars this year.
Sprinkler heads about eighteen dollars.
Yeah, so that's cost, that, that cost less than that.
The rig, yeah.
The disc. I think the flags.
Is it that, just one of, I mean, how often do people park there?
Get a couple things, get tr- trunk or tree, and get this, and we get the F P O A parties.
And they go straight down. I mean, there's a line of them. There's twenty-one of them.
'Cause I'm thinking, maybe it would be better when we have the events to put the cones up or whatever. You know, I know somebody's gotta do it, but, um, compared to having permanent fixtures there. Just a thought.
Yeah.
Well, let me, let me check with Ricky, and, you know, I'll talk to him and say, "Look, if these are there, would you mind doing the weed whacker around them?"
That's, hey, that's six hundred dollars. That buys a lot of sprinkler heads.
Yeah, it does. Well, no, that's one year's worth of sprinkler heads.
Except if every one of them goes bad. But I don't think we have that big a deal. I think the flags would find with the pylons, little pylons.
Put them out there before every event?
Yeah.
So, what?
Takes twenty minutes to do that.
Okay, but we have to know where they are.
Okay.
Someone's gonna mark them.
Maybe you just gotta turn the sprinkler on, have you find out where they're at? Turn the sprinkler on.
Right. Don't park with the sprinklers.
Turn the sprinklers on.
Turn the sprinklers on, you can't park them.
Well, I think that's what, you know what, maybe that's what he did, is turn them on.
Yeah.
Well, that's how you find them, is turn the sprink-
I think that's how we found them. I don't know. That's how I would do it.
Yep.
All right, so-
Anything else on that?
That's all I have, um-
That was a nice job on getting the park ready. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
It was nice to see the young people, that's for sure.
They were having fun, too.
Yeah, I had a chance to talk to a lot of parents and, yeah.
Okay, uh, anything else for Janet? Okay. Melissa, place some fire-
All right. Place the fire, but not much going on, except our new officer has still not, uh, been certified. He's still interstate, and the lady that's supposed to certify him is on vacation until about, uh, the second week in October. So, that's on hold. And we do have a new, uh, jud- charger car ordered. It's gonna cost us like about forty thousand dollars by the time it's equipped.
That's, that's only five thousand more than it was, right? Wasn't it thirty-five to start with?
It was twenty-three, twenty-three.
It was twenty, twenty-two thousand last, in January.
Oh, gotcha. Wow.
This year went to thirty-five, and then it's gonna cost four thousand.
Does the four include the painting and the striping and then-
Life and radio.
So, it's the ins- all, it's all the inside equipment and, and striping?
Yeah, I'm not sure about the, uh, striping.
Or not striping, but you know.
It's all the equipment inside the car, so it's about, what, forty thousand?
Right now, we're around forty.
Forty, yeah. From twenty-two to forty. But I didn't think at twenty-two it wasn't equipped at all, so it's about-
I think we had, we had budgeted about twenty-eight, if I'm not mistaken.
That sounds about right.
Yeah. So, in a way, it's forty from twenty-five, but it's on order. It'll probably be here before the end of the year. So, then, uh, Gary will get his ordered vehicle. So, and also, Lisa sent out on the website, uh, "We had a fire over on, up in Woodland." What's the name of this street again? Winding Way or?
The first you're talking about. First street on the right.
Yeah.
It's on my, uh-
Back where Bart Price lives, back there.
I'll find it.
There was a fire across the space, and the homeowner panicked and called the police department, which was the wrong thing to do. Yeah, for any emergency, you'll, you'll go nine-one-one. When you call the police department, which slows the process. But anyway, uh, police department, uh, the fire department got here within four minutes after they got the message. So, it's good response time, uh- Uh, our fire department had ten people out there. Ten people and about six vehicles. And we had Eastwood's department came, Seven Lakes came, uh, Pinehurst came, uh, Pine, Pine Bluff came, and I think Southern Pine may have came also. So, we had- There was enough. But that's, that's standard oper- uh, operating procedure when they have a structural fire, that all these volunteer departments automatically come, because they don't know how big it's gonna be.
Well, and you have to pay for it.
No, you don't. It's part of the, it's all, well, we pay for it one way or the other.
They get paid per call, preferably.
Oh, in a way, Lisa sent out a message to all the people in, on their, uh, in the village to always call nine-one-one.
That went out.
That went out.
Yes. I got it.
So, that's so much for the police. Now, the fire department, uh, our two thousand twenty-three contract has been signed and is on file, uh, at the rate of point zero, 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 eighty-eight-five. That's a done deal.
Congratulations, you guys.
I just got a-
Thanks for the mic.
Yeah.
You know, it's not over yet.
Oh.
I just got a message from, uh, the fire chief. In fact, he just called, but I couldn't talk, so he e- uh, emailed this over. Uh, tomorrow and Saturday, they're gonna have extra people on duty here and in, uh, West End, uh, in case for, uh, trees down, whatever, floods, whatever. So, in a way, that's what's gonna happen there, and he wants me to give the phone number to all the council members in case you got an issue. So, I'm gonna give you the number and up, you wanna write it down. It's, uh, Eric Strongberg, nine-one-zero-six-three-nine-two-six-eight-three. You got her?
He wants our, he wants us to call him and give us our, give, give our number to him?
No, he just, if you got an issue, oh, he's got an issue. If something happens in your part of the village, just give him a call. Okay?
Thank you.
And I think that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, uh, let's go ahead and do Janet's add-on. Janet's is add-on for investment updates.
Um, just as I reported, I don't know, a couple meetings ago, we're getting like fifty basis points at the moment on our money market funds that are at the bank. Um, we've transferred between our two accounts pretty close to three million dollars into those, into those money market accounts.
Including the water?
Yes, in water. I mean, they're still separate, but so total, it's about three million that are, um, are in those accounts. Now, last week or a couple weeks ago, I got information from North Carolina Municipal Trust, which is an investment, um, it's, it's a, uh, it's a trust fund that has been set up by the state of North Carolina where municipalities and villages can put funds into these money market accounts. It is, uh, in forty years that they've been in this, in, you know, managing these funds, they've, they've never gone below a dollar, so they've never lost money. They're expecting, um, right now to be paying like two and a quarter percent on funds. Totally liquid. You move money in just like in a bank account. You can, um, request money to be transferred back into your accounts if you need it. Um, again, all municipalities, Southern Pines, Vass, uh, Pinehurst, all can. It's one of the only few places we can actually put our money. So, I, I have the information. I didn't bring it with me, but I can give a copy to every, to everyone here, and we can think about it. But I really think that, um, since we need an extra twenty thousand for our police department-
I got that saved already.
Or any money that we do earn, or we, we could put towards streets even, you know, to help with the paving. Um, 'cause that's just, we can't get our, I don't think we can get our arms, we can't get in front of that cost very easily.
I don't, I can't say any reason why we would not wanna do that.
Well, if you put two million in there, it's gonna, two and a half, fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, and two and a half is low. They expect it might even be closer to three and a half by the end of the year, uh, with rates the way they're going.
Nice.
So, in fact, the two and a quarter was before they just had the interest rate change.
Interest change.
So, they're, they should be paying even more than that.
That's actually, it's gonna test an extra forty thousand a year?
Yeah. So-
Nice.
You know, and I'm thinking, you know, whatever we earn there is money that, you know-
Free money?
We hadn't counted on.
We, right, right. And I would love to be able to say, "Let's just put it into the streets," you know, so we-
As long as we can pull it out.
Next year's place card. Forty grand. You got half of them.
Okay.
I, I like the streets are better.
No, no.
So, anyway, um, that's, that's on the-
I make a motion, you do it.
Well, I think everyone just-
We should look at it, and then we can do that at the next meeting.
Right, and, you know, they've never, again, they've never lost money, so it's not like mutual fund where the values, it's not guaranteed. But in forty years, they've had zero percent, but they've never lost money. And if we had it, I mean, in the bank account, it was earning one basis point, which is basically zero. So, um, it can't be, it's not any worse, and it's exponentially better than a bank.
We don't have, there are no, um, financial regulations, how much we can put into that?
Correct. I think other, no, it, because it is a liquid account, so even if it's our fund balance, you can put your fund balance in there, and it's, you know, it's liquid.
Okay, great. That's a hell of a plan. I like it. Thank you. Uh, anything else? Okay, I got a couple things I'd like to put in. One is, uh, talking about, uh, the pool quote from USA Tools.
Yep.
I mean, everybody got a copy of that?
Yes. Thank you for doing this for me.
I, I did a, uh, made a conference call, or not a con- I made a call with a lady to ask some questions about it. But she was out of the office, and I don't know when she'll be back. But if we look at the silver plan, which is the low-end entry plan, um, the way I look at these numbers, it's gonna cost us, uh, it would cost us about fifty-four thousand dollars per year around the pool.
You mean total?
No.
No, for their service?
Hmm? For their services.
Right. Can I just, uh, I did a quick number thing here before everybody on here, um, because they keep track of, uh, who buys the punch cards. So, out of, and I used approximately seventeen hundred residents in, in Fox Park. We had a hundred and eighty-nine residents who purchased punch cards, which is, uh, eleven percent of our population. We had actually forty-three non-residents purchase. So, and, and I think I said this before, you know, it's nice to look at this. I, I have a lot of questions for them. Uh, I, Sharon is putting together the numbers, um, in terms of what we, our costs were for the pool for this year.
I have some, I have some of that.
Do you?
Well, ye- year-to-date, um, according to Sharon's accounts, um, which is just this year, which is January and now, I've got fourteen thousand dollars.
For what?
For everything.
What was the fourteen thousand?
It was, um-
Some of your chemicals and all of that.
Right, but if you look at what she prepared for twenty-twenty-one last year, okay, total expenditures were fifty thousand.
Right.
Four fifty-three. That was for the, the year. Um, as far as what we, income we had coming in, we sold ten thousand dollars, ten thousand four eighty-five of pool passes, twenty-twenty-one.
That was last year, twenty-twenty.
Ten thousand what?
Up to fifty thousand.
Four eighty-five.
Yeah, so, I, you know, I-
That was the revenue. And it was a, so it's a basically a forty thousand dollar loss.
Correct. And which is pretty standard, yeah.
Right, and that, and that, I mean, I don't think that is outrageous in terms of-
It is.
But it's still a loss. And if you're going to look at, and I've already spoken to Lisa, you know, they, the rough estimate she has gotten for the repairs that need to be done for next year is seven. And, and I'm saying, well, bucket to ten, um, I'm also, you know, you have to look at, we're going to have an increased, for operate, operating the pool next year, and you gotta figure at least, they, they said chemicals, at least thirty percent increase. So, before, you know, I'd like, and I told Don, I'd like to set up a call or a meeting with these people. Um, I have a lot of questions for them. And, you know, I think we have to really delve into the numbers.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we make a decision.
I was pleased that we even got a response.
Yeah, me too.
So, yeah, there's a lot of i's to be dotted and t's to be crossed, but it gives us a starting point to see. And I took, I just took their silver thing and added a pool manager.
Yeah.
And all that other stuff came up about fifty-four thousand. If you went to the high end, it's costing about.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to keep it open.
Oh, yeah, I think we have to keep it open because at this point, we don't have much of an alternative.
Well, but I think we also have to look at what we're charging to use the pool for people and maybe that, that's an increase. I thi- I would like to look at other ways of, um, I would like to look at seasonal passes and things like that. So there's a lot of things I'd like to do.
That's a minor thing, I think, in terms of the cost. We're never gonna recoup our costs.
No, but I.
But my concern is the management of pool. Compliance with the law, get the right people, get the right staff. That's my concern. Because, you know, Lisa doesn't have the time anymore.
No, and, you know, she did all that for nothing.
Our options go away pretty quickly. Like we can hire somebody new.
Right, and again, the, you know, we still, there's a lot of costs that, I mean, when you think about it, if we're gonna pay, you said around fifty-seven thousand?
About fifty-four.
Fifty-four. And we, so we may not have to pay salaries or whatever it's coming, so that's twelve grand, yeah, from last year.
That's all out of that.
And then, but yet we still have, I'm assuming, well, this we don't know, what does that fee include? Does it include absolutely everything which is, you know, repairing?
Those are the questions we have.
It's repairs, it's not.
Is it the permits and, and everything? Does she also have the landscaping, et cetera, costs in there?
No.
Yes, well, in the, in that.
Oh, that, oh.
In the.
That was last year.
Yes.
Yes, that's.
Yes. This year, the fourteen thousand dollar number, um, that was only, that was only through August.
Yeah.
So they, I think they had one more payroll after that.
Well, and there'll be more electrical bills.
Oh, and then there's a constant, that's why this year to date, as of the end of August, it was fourteen thousand.
So some costs are always gonna be there, the electricity.
No, I understand that, but I'm just saying we need to take all of that into consideration.
And insurance, I'm assuming, cause they're not gonna, you know, we still have to have, and those are some of the bigger costs. You know, that will not go away, so we could be looking at bumping that up to, it could be seventy, eighty, ninety thousand dollars to allow that pool.
Sure. That's why we need to get discussion with them. Yeah, this would just a rough draft proposal. So there's just a lot to be done on that.
And yet I do have to say that, you know, we are getting, we are getting close to the thought of if we wanna keep adding or losing money or operating, spending more money, let me put it that way.
Right.
Tax increases, we're, we're on that, we're on that line right now. I don't know what reevaluation is gonna do and.
They've started it, I know that, and it'll be effective on twenty twenty-three.
Have they have started?
Have started. I talked to them.
All the assessments?
Yeah.
Have started.
Well, the va- the valuations, yeah.
Reevaluation's already started.
So we, we just have to. You know, we're still at a very low tax rate, which I love, believe me.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, we, we don't have, we don't take in a lot of money right now and we're spending all of it.
Yeah.
Just as we operate today.
Yep.
Yep. As, as I get a call back from her, I'll get in touch with you.
Okay.
I actually would like her to come down and look at the facility.
Okay, just something else.
Whatever minions come down.
But thank you for.
I think she's out of route.
Round.
I think she's out of route. We gotta get her down here on one of those folks. Next thing I wanna talk about was the, uh, police reimbursement fund. I apologize to the council, but I thought we had passed this, but what I had read was the lawyer's.
Opinion.
Opinion. And, and we can do it.
I, I have a question. Why would we, I, I think it's a great idea. Why wouldn't we do it for all employees?
Absolutely.
Okay, and then I have another question is why would we limit it to the first year of employment versus, cause we could be training someone for years.
Well, I mean, that's a good point.
And why don't we say from one year after your training?
We talked about that at one point. For one year, you gotta pay X. If you're here less than two years, you pay less.
I think that, I think that if we spend money training someone, that, that they should at least be invested in us for a year after we train them.
Oh, absolutely.
And that they should be responsible. If they leave prior to that.
If they leave prior to that, they, they owe us money.
For the, whatever we spent on. Well, if you can use their vacation time as well as their.
We can, according to this.
Yeah. I think a version of that is, is.
Yeah, what I'd like to do is change that to all employees. That's what I wrote.
And I don't think I would limit it to the first year of employment.
Correct. So I'll go ahead and get this and then we can bring this back to meeting.
I think that's a great idea.
Sounded good.
Agree?
Yes.
There is a meeting, ten, five, and I don't know if anybody on the council is interested in attending this, for the opioid abatement program. The county's gonna get six, over six million dollars over the next eighteen years to, uh, counter the opioid use. So they've asked for input from all of the municipalities, come to the meeting, suggestions, what they could spend the money, uh, for. So if anybody is interested in going there, let me know. Attend that meeting. Ten fifteen up in Carthage. At the egg center up there. Okay, performance bond. During the, I did, uh, I think everybody got a copy of the lawyer's finding. Basically says, um, we can ask for that performance bond, not performance bond, but a performance guarantee, and it comes in one of three ways. You know, it could be a performance bond or a letter of credit.
Or equivalent.
And equivalent. Back there, and, uh, but the way our lawyer said, and this is what concerns me a little, is when he says he's got an or in there.
Or.
Yeah.
They can pick.
Yeah, there's an or in his finding. What he's saying, and let me look at it. It said developers cannot sell lots, et cetera, uh, close on sales until a final plat is recorded. And they cannot get a final plat approval for recordation until they have either installed all the required infrastructure, water and roads. Or provided a perform, a guarantee, bond, letter of credit, et cetera. So.
One or the other.
One or the other is what it looks like to me. And we do have a certification from the engineer for the base of the road right now. And I talked with the engineer earlier today and he, they will do another one, uh, once they have let this statement settle. And then he'll do, he'll do that and give us another certification.
How about the retention ponds? Got a warranty on that?
That's a maintenance agreement with it. The retention pond has a, a specific maintenance agreement that's gonna be filed with the CCRs.
So that's, that's where we stand on that with either or thing. If we get a complete certification for the roads that are done, water's in, roads are done, retention pods.
By an engineer.
By the engineer, that's what we're getting.
Should be, that should be.
That should be sufficient, I guess. This is the certification we got. I don't know if anybody knocked that, but they got all the specifics about the base code.
That'll have to carry over until the final black copy.
Yeah, until they get another one for the black.
Three year after that.
And then a year after that, they do the final, they, they put another, what, what, talking with the folks at Pinehurst, what they did with Winston Pines is when they had that hundred percent fill, actually when they had seventy-five percent fill. They told them to go ahead and pave that road again and put the other, the second layer pavement on it. And then they took that road with a one-year guarantee.
From that point on.
From that point on. So we can hold off for a hundred percent fill, say when you're a hundred percent filled and you go back and repave the road and then give us a year.
They can do a lot of damage with seventy-five percent.
They're gonna do a ton of damage.
So I would say wait until it's done.
So that's, that's kinda where I am with this. I don't know whether we need to chase down a performance guarantee since we're at this point.
This is mutually agreed upon, I mean, as far as the, the developer.
Well, I, I actually, I tried to get ahold of the developer today, uh, we couldn't get ahold of it.
I suppose you're. Downsize is if the guy goes broke, uh, ninety percent through the project, we're hungry.
Yeah.
We're hungry. He's got a performance bond, we get that, we get.
We can, we can, looking at one sixty D eight oh four one, says we can implement this anytime we want.
Anytime, yeah.
Anytime we want, and, and it's up to the developer as to what they wanna do, whether they wanna do a performance bond.
Or a letter of credit or something. I still think we should, we should get this down because as, if we have other development, I mean, real development, especially commercial properties or whatever. Um, I really think that we should be.
Have the process.
We, we should.
Yeah.
We should get a process down so this isn't confusing the next time and we do it right up in front.
Have an answer for you for the meeting tonight, but we never return our calls.
Text him.
I probably will do that tomorrow.
I think I would prefer.
Just the fact that they're difficult to, to get ahold of, in good times, is an indicator of how much trouble you're gonna have if there's a, a hiccup.
Something, yeah. Okay, anybody have anything else on the board?
No.
I mean, a pooping comment for the items on the agenda, I hope anyone wants.
Yeah, just, um, I don't know, the, the golfers accessory building, let me just give you a little history. That thing's been going on for almost eighteen months. I mean, it's not new.
Yeah.
When it first came in, Lisa took it to Mick. Mick came to planning and zoning and said, you guys need to be involved in the approval on this. Because Lisa ordinarily will approve an accessory building. It's not a big deal. I mean, you know, is it so many feet off the, you know, off the, the property line, that kinda thing. But because this was different, obviously, and a much, a much bigger project, planning and zoning, I sat down with Lisa, JP, the former GM.
Yeah.
And Brick. We went through the plan and there was a lot of discussion, and Tom, you might remember some of this, a lot of discussion over where it was gonna go, all right? The first place they proposed was down on Hoffman, right in the curve. The second place that was proposed was close to the Pickleball Courts, property owned by the village, and you gotta go through the legal process in order to sell that. There was a special council meeting. Leslie chaired it. Mick was out of town. John Brown was here. Saw, the accessory building came up. I'd already talked to Mick about, they need to look at that property by the entrance. Because we said no to Hoffman Road, and the process to, for the village to sell it was very, very complicated. And that property was not near as buildable as what they have, okay? So when the building goes in, it's gonna be angled, it is forest green, it will have a nice fence, it will have all the plantings. It was the best spot for them to put it. Now, if the council wants to get into the business of approving accessory buildings, that's up to you guys, but this thing just didn't happen, okay? I mean, there was a lot of involvement and a lot of meetings, and that's how we got where we are. I realize some people think they cut the frickin' national forest. That is just not the case, okay? I think once it's in, they have got to have a maintenance building.
Correct.
That thing they have over there never should have been allowed, never ever, ever should have been allowed. There is nothing in the ordinances that allows that kind of an area for maintenance. And so having them have a building is gonna be a great improvement to what they can do and their ability to make the course look good. Because all their sand piles and all that kinda stuff now goes inside the maintenance facility. Rick is handling it now, and I see him at the gym like two or three times a week, cause he helps with one of our programs, um, and he's right on top of it. So, I mean, they've waited almost ten months, I think, to actually get the building materials and that kinda stuff. So please don't think, and that all happened before three of you were elected, all right? So please don't think that that building just happened to pop up one day, cause that's not the case. I mean, if you guys wanna get into the building, the, the business of approving accessory buildings, that's up to you. Recreational district is in a, beginning processes of a rewrite with planning and zoning. So they will include things like a conditional zoning. So when someone goes to do that kinda thing, depending upon what, what they're doing. We can set all of the requirements for someone to be able to do something in their recreational district, and they don't all have to match. It's gonna depend on what the use is. So I just don't want you to think that planning and zoning and, you know, Lisa or the golf course won't have cotton on this thing, cause that is not the case.
I, I think, I think, at least how I feel, and I was involved in a lot of this too, the, the thing I think that, I don't wanna say bothers me. But I think what the council is looking for is, and it's got nothing to do with what zoning did, what, what, um, Lisa does. It's that we don't know, we didn't see, and I think for some of these larger projects, whatever was submitted. I think it would be helpful if Lisa brought the commercial or the recreational district, brought that to a council meeting, so we could see what was submitted. That's not, that's not saying.
That's fine. I just don't think the council should be in the business of approving accessory.
That's not what I think.
No, we just wanna see it as all.
I think the thing is, is that because we don't, because we're still, if, if it, and I'm not saying it would be an eyesore. But if there was something that was really weird about it, okay, and we never saw it, we're still accountable for it. People are gonna say, well, the council let that happen. It's like, well, yeah, but we didn't even see it. We're not in the process at all. And I'm not saying we should be in the process, but I think we should be in the, the visual aspect of it. Just like with a commercial, if someone wants to develop our commercial business zone, I think the council would want a presentation on what you're gonna do.
You know, and we never had it. That would have to be a putter conditional zone.
No, I know, but, and I'm talking about, even like with the, any, anything that's not residential. Um, I think we should be given a, a, um, a preview of, of what's gonna happen. Just so it's more of a FYI and if we have it.
See, it doesn't necessarily come across to planning and zoning as an FYI. I mean, I'm, I'm just telling you. I mean, planning and zoning does its due diligence before we do anything like that. And Mick was very much aware of what it was gonna look like and where it was gonna be, okay? So the council did know. And I don't wanna argue.
But I don't, I don't remember, I don't remember ever, I'm just saying, I don't remember ever seeing a drawing of what it's gonna look like. I don't, Don, did, have you?
Yeah, I did see a drawing way back when.
Okay.
Way back when.
And so I guess, I guess just the fact that it's just not, it's just not available knowledge, at least it's not to us. It's not commonly available that we can say, oh, what does that, what does that look like? Cause we don't know. I don't know.
Lisa may have the drawing.
I'm sure Lisa has the plans.
Go to Lisa and do it. I mean, I, and I don't mean to sound frustrated, but I mean, there are people on the council who are very much in the know about what was going on. So anyway, when it's done, it's gonna be forest green, it'll be angled, it'll be screened, and it should help make an improvements, like I said, in what the golf course does. Because that wire thing, or whatever it is, comes down and all that equipment then goes in the maintenance facility along with the sand piles. So once you have a maintenance facility, then it's much easier to hold the golf course accountable to an appearance standard. Because you can't use the, we don't have a maintenance building excuse anymore.
And the one, aside to this is that the, when the golf course moves out of there, they have to provide access, uh, for emergency vehicles to the, um, tree houses back there. Which doesn't exist right now.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, second thing, um, on fencing, and I think the two biggest complaints you'd probably get, one would be fencing, and I think the other one would be accessory buildings, I think. And. To install some kind of process where you get the permit for the fence, and then someone comes out and you show them, where are you gonna put the fence? And then there's also a final inspection on the fence.
Right.
Eliminates a lot of.
Absolutely, yeah.
It's the same thing with accessory buildings. Someone needs to see where they're gonna be sited, and then someone goes back out and looks at the plantings and make sure that they have lined up with what the ordinance says about what's required. Now, I don't think you can ask Lisa to do that. I don't, I mean, I don't think she can put that on her plate. I don't think planning and zoning should do it. I could do it, but I don't, but we're not, we're not elected. We were appointed. That's the same thing with the appearance commission. You know, those people are all appointed. But if we're talking about infrastructure, I don't know if the water guy has extra time, not, I know he's just in the throes of starting. But she might be able to find a very, very part-time person who was willing to do that. That is the thing that will stop a lot of complaints and a lot of irritation, because if you put an accessory building in and you don't screen it, you're gonna get told to screen it. Because there's gonna be inspection on your building before you get the write-off. If you decide to put up a fence that's higher than four feet, and there's one down on North Shamrock right now, at that final inspection, you're not gonna pass. I mean, when I put a fence in, in, in Chicago, they came to look at where it was gonna go, they measured the depth of the holes before I poured the concrete. And they came back, now, we don't need to be that tight, but we do need something that shows this person installed what they said they were gonna install.
The problem is, we don't even do a final inspection.
Well, no, I get that, but, but that's, I think that's a, I think that's a manpower issue.
Yeah.
And if we're talking about infrastructure, and we know we're already approaching the red line, from, uh, from an enforcement standpoint. It's very different to have someone who's a inspector come out and look at it than it is to have a police officer come out and look at it. It's, that's just, that's crossing, that's crossing lanes, and it kinda, it kinda dilutes the authority of the police if they come out and say, well, by the way, you know, you didn't. if they come out and say, well, by the way, you know, you didn't, you didn't put the right number of trees. I mean, it's just not, it kinda, it kinda crosses the line. So if we're gonna talk about infrastructure, it might be worth it to look for, and I bet she could find some retired guy who would do it. I mean, all I gotta do is learn the ordinances. And then, then the problem, a lot of the problems we have with enforcement, especially in those two areas, are gonna go bye-bye.
Yeah.
That's, that's, that's my opinion. On the swim contract, one of the things I would ask you to drill down on is what do they do when their employees don't show up? Because those people are in Raleigh, and I know from working at the gym, there was a horrendous lifeguard shortage a couple of years ago. That's why we went to attendance.
Correct.
And I can tell you right now, those will not be high-paid positions, guaranteed. We are struggling at the gym to get people in to fill out the front desk staff. My biggest concern with that swim thing is what are they gonna do when Joe Blow, the reg man, calls off? And then we have to close the pool and then you just have a big mess. There has to be some kind of really big penalty for that and that is something I would just ask you to really drill down on.
We have that situation now without staff, we have to close, and we've had to do that to some.
Yeah, but if we're paying somebody to be there, then.
They're, they're, they're paying their people twelve to fifteen dollars an hour.
Yeah, exactly.
Which is what we were paying them.
Yeah, too.
And they still wouldn't show up.
And they're gonna have to recruit those people from here.
Yeah.
Because people are not gonna drive from.
Oh, no, of course not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Believe me, there's a lot of questions I have.
Yeah, that, that for me is, that for me is a big one. All right, thank you very much.
Thanks, Mary.
Thank you, Mary. Anybody have anything else?
Um, just a suggestion on your ordinance officer.
Could you, could you identify yourself, Sandy, so that we can, everybody knows Mary.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't introduce myself.
Sandy Cameron Richmond Road. Just on your ordinance officer, if he might borrow a golf cart once a month?
He can do that.